All right, item number eight, we do have a public hearing this evening. We're going to hold a public hearing and there's two items, adopt a resolution approving the 2017-18 operating and 2722 capital improvement program budget and adopt a resolution approving the city appropriations, the GAN limit for 2017-2018. Mr. O'Leary.
Actually, I'm going to say a few words and then I will turn to the interim finance director. Before you tonight is proposed operating and capital budgets for your consideration to approve. And I wanted to give you an outline of the topics that will be discussed tonight and one topic that staff will be bringing back. As you will recall, the city council conducted two fairly lengthy budget study sessions on June 12th and June 14th. Purpose of those study sessions was for detailed review and presentations and discussions by the city council on the variety of topics and proposed expenditures that are outlined in the budget documents. City council provided some direction and in particular, the city council discussed what we're calling the proposed major enhancement program, which would establish task forces with additional staff to address neighborhood and downtown issues. That proposal and the city council's direction, guidance, comments from the study sessions is not before you tonight. Staff is requesting some additional time to refine those proposals, to provide some alternatives and to integrate the comments from the city council discussion in order to refine those proposals for further city council review. What is in front of you tonight, however, is the general fund, the enterprise fund, and all other operating fund, operating budgets. As the finance director will outline in a moment, those funds are very significant dollar amounts and cover all of the city's operating requirements across all of its programs, services, and activities. Also before you tonight is the five-year capital improvement plan and a one-year capital improvement budget with allocations proposed to move a broad variety of capital improvement projects forward during the coming year. Lastly, in terms of what's incorporated in the budget, as we have done in most of the last many years, or all of the last many years, departments have identified certain limited program and service enhancements that are recommended for the city council's consideration to expand, improve, or otherwise change the delivery of existing programs and services to be able to provide more, to do it in a more efficient or a different way. Those departmental service enhancements are listed separately for your consideration, both in the budget document as well as an attachment to the staff report tonight, and we look forward to your consideration of that as well. Lastly, for your discussion and consideration tonight is a relatively routine item, and that is the city's GAN limit, a feature of state law that establishes a maximum amount of budgeted expenditure that the city is authorized to engage. And again, this year, like all of the past previous years since the law went into effect in the state of California, this city is not at risk of meeting or exceeding its GAN limit. The finance director will provide you some additional explanation about that item. So in front of you tonight, you have two resolutions, one on the GAN limit and one that is, fully incorporates the various budgets that I mentioned and that the finance director will detail in his further discussion. We've also included in the agenda packet, as was requested a few years ago by the city council, an alternative resolution should the city council determine that it is not prepared to adopt the budget. This being the last meeting prior to the end of the fiscal year, fiscal year which ends on June 30th. In order to continue operations and expenditures into the new fiscal year beginning July 1st, the city would either need to adopt a budget or would need to alternatively adopt a continuing appropriations resolution. And again, so we've included, there are actually three resolutions in your agenda packet, only two of which you need to adopt tonight. Just a couple of broad-based comments to frame the discussion that the finance director will provide in more detail. The budgets were developed with a series of continuing objectives and big-picture priorities that frame the city's work program and in support of that work program, the revenue and expenditures that are allocated to the delivery of services, programs, and activities to meet those objectives. The slide in front of you on the screen identifies those big-picture objectives, and I think they're worth mentioning for the purpose of public information because they are extremely important to the everyday activities that the city undertakes. Those objectives include the full implementation of the city's transit corridor plan. That work is in progress and will continue for the next several years as we begin to see the vision of the future of San Bruno in its physical form build out in accordance with that plan. Growing city revenues to meet the needs of a growing and more sophisticated community that, whose needs have evolved and have become, needs have evolved and have become broader. In order to meet those needs, promoting wherever and however we can, the use of service delivery efficiencies, most particularly including technology and technological advancement. Strengthening the community connections and the engagement of citizens, providing opportunities for public discussion, for public education, and all manner of public engagement. Improving and securing the aesthetics and the safety of the community is assuming a very high priority in the city's daily work activity with code enforcement and with our law enforcement and our fire safety. Rehabilitation, replacement of community facilities and infrastructure. We have the wonderful opportunity to plan for the replacement of our recreation center and our swimming pool, but that is only one of the many different items and issues that are in front of us on a nearly everyday basis to assure that this community's building and operational infrastructure maintains its ability to serve the community long into the future. And then just more generically, keeping our eye on the ball at what's coming, not just what's immediately here, so that we can do as we have done for the last many years to make sure that the San Bruno of now is prepared and is looking forward to the San Bruno of the future, so that we can continue to evolve, to grow, and to make San Bruno the best it can be forever. With that, I'm going to ask the interim finance director to give you a review. This will be deliberately at a fairly high level and focusing on the financial aspects of the budget. Again, we spent two fairly lengthy study sessions a couple of weeks ago, going into a great deal more detail about the budgets, and you have the thick volume of the materials available to you in hard copy. It is also available on the city's website for any interested citizen. I would just mention as well, I've indicated the more detailed discussion that occurred at the city council budget study sessions. Those study sessions were videotaped, that the opportunity to view and hear that discussion is available to any citizen, either by way of television on the city's Channel One at scheduled times, or by using the direct connection via the city's website to view those programs online. So with that, I'll ask Mr. O'Leary to give us an overview of the financial aspects of the budgets.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, your resolution in part calls for operating revenues, an appropriation of about $94 million plus transfers in, and operating expenditures of $81 million and transfers out of about $7 million. In summary, the slide behind me is showing that of those totals, around $43 million represents the general fund. You can see the various amounts for the four enterprise funds. In total, the internal service funds are around $5 million, and all remaining special revenue funds are in the range of $3 million. In addition to that, the total that I described in the resolution includes capital improvement, and there's a separate slide that summarizes that that I will show in a moment. Wanted to just focus on the general fund for a second and the two aspects of that that we discussed in some detail at the study sessions. The difference between revenues and expenditures in 1718, expenditures, proposed expenditures exceed proposed sources or revenues by about $350,000, and the recommended 1718 budget utilizes fund balance from 1617 of an offsetting amount, $350,000, to balance the budget. I would point out also, at the bottom of the middle column, the approximately $3 million is the ending fund balance that we're projecting at the end of the current year, and the 350 in balancing the budget comes out of that 2.9, leaving about 2.6 that is available for service enhancements if the council desires to utilize those funds. Just a brief comment on a couple of the enterprise accounts. You see that for the water fund, increased rates will bring in a total revenue of about $14.3 million in the right-hand column. This is then leading to expenditures, operating expenditures of about $9 million, a little over $9 million, which represents 65% of the operating revenue that, the balance beyond the 65%, a balance of about $5 million is available for current capital projects. For the wastewater fund, similarly, the increased rates will bring in about $16,600,000 with an operating expenditure of only 54% of that revenue, leaving about half of the revenue generated in 1718 available for current capital projects. For the cable fund, just wanted to point out that the proposed cable fiber to the home project, which will serve additional multiple dwelling units, is about $1.4 million, and that capital requirement is what leads to increasing the negative fund balance in the cable fund from what is estimated at $9.3 million to about $10.7 million at the end I mentioned the resolution amounts a minute ago and indicated that there is additional, included in those appropriations are additional CIP funding. You see the current year 1718 funding request, which is in the second column from the left, of $29,300,000, and that would be the new appropriation that the council would be appropriating if they elect to proceed with all of the proposed projects. There's, you see a large amount, about $46 million in carryover appropriations in the various capital funds that bring the total available projects for 1718 to about $76 million. Wanted to just point out, again, as we did in the study session, in particular, one of the reserve funds, that is the general fund capital reserve, you see going back to 16, the beginning of 1617, which would be the end of 1516, there was about an $8 million fund balance in this general fund capital reserve. You see there are projects both for carryover and proposed in 1718 of $8 million roughly, that, a little less than $8 million, that is going to bring, if all of that, if all of those funds are in fact expended, the ending fund balance for this reserve would be about $1.1 million at the end of 1718. And I just wanted to point out that there is no immediate capacity to restore the general fund capital reserve to any higher level, so this reduction with approved projects, again, would result in this balance of about $1.1 million. The balance of the discussion then is on the enhancements. I don't know if you want to open up?
So actually, just going back to what I said earlier, we've included slides regarding the enhancements in anticipation of any conversation the city council may want to have on those specifics. But really, the time tonight is for your purposes, for to discuss any additional items, including the enhancements that the city council may wish to consider further before taking any action. And we've agendized this discussion tonight to include a public hearing, so we would recommend that you take the opportunity to ask any immediate questions and then open the public hearing for members of the public to be heard and then to proceed with any further discussion the city council may wish to undertake.
Okay. Any questions of staff at this time before we open the public hearing? No? Okay, at this time we'll open the public hearing. Would anyone from the public like to address the council on the budget items? If I close the public, you want to speak? Sure.
Steve Seymour from Astic Avenue. The enhancements that you were talking about, is that what brings the general fund balance at the end of 1718 down to 1.167?
The 1.167 is in a reserve fund, so that's not impacting the general fund, and the enhancements do not change that number or impact that number. That is, it's a reserve for capital projects only, and it is for capital projects that have no dedicated funding through an enterprise account or whatever. It's a general, a general fund-supported capital project.
Okay, then, just from my understanding then, is what you're saying that you, the target, I was in one of the earlier meetings, and the target general fund balance that you wanted for the reserve fund was 8 million. So does the budget that's being proposed draw from that 8 million so that at the end of 2017-18, you only have 1.67 million in the reserve fund?
With the previously approved and the recommended projects of a capital nature, that is correct. This particular reserve, the balance would be the 1.167 at the end of the 1718 fiscal year.
The reserve is never at 8 million. Reserve is not, it's not at 8 million though, is it?
That's correct.
It's at 4.3?
It's only at 4.3.
Correct. And I would just, I would add for the city council's information that that reserve is deliberately intended as the funding source, as the director mentioned, for capital facility projects in particular, that do not have another dedicated source of funding. So on an annual basis, those amounts are used for capital projects. This year is no different than any other year, except that the balance projected at year-end will be a bit lower than in some other previous years.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anyone else from the public like to address the council? If we close the public hearing, you're precluded from discussing this with us. Any action?
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion, second, to close the public hearing. Anything on the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Council? Comments, questions? Action? Marty, anything?
I'm a little concerned about going from 9 million down to 1.1 million and here in the reserve fund, and historically, we've maintained approximately how much?
Generally, in the last, just by memory, in the last few years, we've been between 4 and 5 million or so.
And that money went this year to which projects, a number of different projects, or?
Many different projects.
Just as it worked out. So it was just another location where money was pooled to be able to fund the various projects that we're putting in place now.
So it went to the capital improvement program, and I believe there's a table in the financial summary section of the capital improvement program that identifies how much came out of?
So that's fine. I guess what I'm looking at, when you carry over 46 million from the CIP, that wasn't spent, that was approved the previous year, and then needing to draw down the reserve fund, I mean, are we going to be able to do all this work if we're, it didn't happen last year?
The majority of the work in the capital improvement program is in the utility enterprises, water and wastewater. The amounts that came out of the general fund capital reserve are primarily, they are funding stormwater projects for which there is no dedicated revenue available, and that carries a fairly significant price tag, along with public facility-related projects that have no other dedicated funding source. So the tables in the budget identify how much came from where, and while I believe you're articulating a concern about the scope of the program and whether all of the many projects proposed can actually get done, a more precise analysis would need to be made in order to determine the, since most of those projects are utility projects, there's, it's not the same thing as saying, well, if you took out the capital reserve monies, that would lighten the load, because those projects that are being funded by the capital reserve would just not be able to be delivered at all, irrespective of whether there was capacity to deliver them or not. And many of them are essential projects for the city's reliability.
For the 3 million proposed in this budget, roughly, where is, where is that going?
So the finance director tells me that of that balance in the general fund capital reserve, 2 million was transferred in for pavement management projects, and is being transferred out from that fund via this budget for actual delivery of the pavement program. And you'll recall, that's per city council previous direction.
So do we want to go through this supplemental thing here, or one at a time, or do you want to, which way do we want to go with our comments? Just open for everything?
What's easier for you, Jim?
I think it might be best to answer any questions regarding the base budget and then go back to the enhancements.
That's, that's fine. I would like to ask to increase the budget, believe it or not, for the curb ramps that we currently have budgeted. I believe we have, is it 75,000 currently added on? I'm sorry, I just had it. I'm sorry, so there's no, there's a carryover of 288,000, this is on page 409. There's no money added for this year, and then it drops down to 20,000 in 2018, 2019, '20, and nothing in 2021.
For the pedestrian ramps?
Yes. I think that we need to be a little more aggressive on it. It just continually gets more expensive to construct things, and 50,000 more would probably be able to do two more intersections. That's what I would like to see in that, and if I need to, I can, I guess amend the proposal budget, but I wanted to share that with the council so we can possibly talk about it.
So for the current year, for 1718, the amount programmed for that purpose is $288,000. That's the number you want to increase?
Well, the new request, the carryover's 288, is that right? I'm reading that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so I would want to put more in there, another 50,000.
For 1718?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to put some, spruce up, spruce up some of our existing parks on the east side of town. I know we're getting a beautiful, brand-new park at Florida, we're getting a brand-new park over in Crestmore, but I would like to add some benches over in Seventh Avenue Walnut Park. There's very little places to kind of hang out. I I went there, uh, in the last month, and it's a beautiful little park, just that there's really not too many places to kinda hang out. Your kids are fine jumping around and, and playing a little bit there, but, um, I think we need, we could put some tables. I didn't see any barbecue pits there, I, I don't wonder, curious why we wouldn't have any there. And those are my comments for, for now, without the enhancements.
Rico, anything?
Just on the general, um, couple of things. Just as a, a thought to the, uh, I'm sorry.
Jim?
Through the chair, go ahead, Jim.
I, I guess I, I was just suggesting or, or would, would ask the council's pleasure if, if there is a specific dollar amount, as the council member mentioned, on the pedestrian ramp project, I mean, that is clearly a specific action that the council would be clear on and would be able to vote one way or another. On, on the second item you, you brought up, I'm not sure if, it, it, it sounded to me as if there may be further consideration that staff might come back, uh, with a budget amendment down the road to specifically address what you're asking for as opposed to not, unless you have something specific that you want the council to consider.
Thank you. Um, I think it would be great for, uh, staff to come back and when we address the supple- I guess the second phase is supplemental, I, for when we're talking about the task force and maybe, I would maybe, maybe some of the other council members have some requests to be, um, put in at that time, but I don't wanna hold, hold it up, but I would like staff to kinda look.
At least it would, we, we could have something specific that the council could consider. Either then, I mean, that's, I think we're, we're talking about coming back on the, for the major enhancements on the twenty-seventh of July, I'm not, or the twenty-fifth, I'm not sure that we might be re- ready, but in the first quarter, we, we could come back
Right.
and precise some of the other items that the council is not voting.
If I can get an answer on, is barbecuing allowed on the east side?
We could, we could look into that and report back to you about that. Barbecuing is not allowed in all city parks, but we will, we will look into that and let you know.
Through the chair? I just have a quick question, just so everybody's clear about it. If you, if your request is to enhance the sidewalk rehabilitation budget by fifty thousand dollars, that fifty thousand dollars would be coming from this reserve fund, correct? I mean, 'cause that's one of those unfunded... Or not dedicated revenue?
It's not coming from water fund.
No.
It's not coming from cable.
So, generally, the answer to that question is, or comment is yes. Um, we would have to look at the available balance. It is an eligible cost for, um, measure A or gas tax funds, but we would have to look at the available balances, um, and, and make a determination about whether they're sufficient to transfer an additional fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, so, I, I, I just want everyone in the public to understand that when we make these requests, we have to, that's where the money comes from. I mean, either it comes from here or it comes from a designated revenue stream. It's not that we can just throw out numbers and the ma- the money magically appears, so, just so you all are aware of that.
Through the chair, and while we're on this, this issue, um, yeah, streetlights and, you know, street, street resurfacing rehabilitation, uh, comes from these also, and also the measure A funds, but I would also, uh, I appreciate my colleagues, uh, bring, my colleague bringing that up as far as the, uh, the handicap ramp improvements. I made eye contact with our public works director, uh, as a member of the subcommittee. I think, you know, we can come back with a budget amendment. I'd like, I'd like the subcommittee to do just like what we did with the street resurencing and also with the streetlights, to review and assess what the community is as far as the, uh, you know, the, the shortage of these handicap ramps and where we should go, because I don't know what twenty thousand dollars is gonna do, you know, in the, you know, in the near future, in the, you know, future budget, so... And maybe we could only do two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of work this coming year, you know, but we can, you know, maybe outline a program over the next few years, you know, that, you know, that will hopefully catch up on that, so, I'm with you on that.
Okay. Rico? Oh, one more thing? Go ahead.
One more. It involves our trees, our, our city trees, and, and I'm looking at page three ninety-four, and we do have carry it, carry over, over of ninety-six thousand and, um, we're requesting seventy-five thousand, and without reading the blurb here about what's been going on there, it's, it seems that we have the money to do it, just that we haven't, um, completed the work. And I'm bringing this up because as I drive around our city, and I'm, I'm looking at those branches that are hanging over the street, and I'm, I witnessed a tree that, I didn't see it fall down in Commodore Park, but it was a big tree, and it fell down and it, part of the limb landed on a bench, and, you know, on these windy San Bruno afternoons, and it was that morning that it, it actually happened. And, and I think that we should really look at, um, focusing on spending this, this money and, and getting those trees trimmed, because, um, as it says here, as of May, sixty-six of the hundred and forty-six for tree removal have been completed, and, um, if we need more money to do that, then, then we should do it, because it's already been identified in, in a project to be removed, and I, I wanted to, um, point that out, that if we need more money there, I think it's the time to do it, um, 'cause we can't have, um, you know, God forbid, something tragically happening when it's already on the books, that they should be cut, pruned, um, and taken care of.
So, the funding programmed in this project does just that. It completes the work that was identified in the two thousand and ten tree inventory, um, and provides funding for the update of that inventory, so, once we have that update, we will be able to more precisely identify what additional work going forward needs also to be done and what the cost of that will be.
Just to clarify, so, of the study done in two thousand and ten, that money that we currently have in our budget with the seventy-five thousand dollars would take care of the trees identified in two thousand and ten, but not anything new since then, and I'm sure there's plenty of trees that are in seven years, you know, trees have a lifespan too, but, um, that's how I'm reading the report.
So, the, the funding that is available in this project, including the carry-forward and the new, uh, proposed appropriation, will complete the work identified in the two thousand and ten Arbor Street report. As you well understand, trees are living, growing, evolving, um, the features of our community, the updated report will doubtless identify a new program of work that then will need to be addressed in subsequent years.
Right, but in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, there's no money budget in this five-year plan?
Based, uh, based on the uncertainty of what the amounts needed to address the new updated report findings, so that, that will be done, the report will be updated this year, and the CIP budget will be accordingly updated in subsequent years.
Okay.
Rico?
A couple of things on the general budget, and just to go on the Vice Mayor's comment regarding the curb ramps, I'm in favor of that. In regards to, uh, parks on the east side, something I can have some experience with, is, um, I think that is something that maybe you should go back to our Parks and Rec Commission, who's dealt with that. I know there are some parks that did have barbecue pits, picnic benches, and these were taken out by the residents on some parks, asking because it became an area of congregation. It became an area at, at night, having fires to keep warm. Uh, it, uh, provided an atmosphere that was not the best and conducive for some of the neighborhoods and community, and they felt unsafe. So, I think what might be of value is go back to the Park and Rec Commission. Um, it's just like the drinking in the park, it used to be allowed everywhere and anywhere, then it became, um, only to certain parks, and then it became only to picnic sites at certain parks. So, there's been an evolution of that because of everybody trying to have a, a good piece of the pie and wanting to have a good, safe neighborhood to go to. So, that might just be a, a suggestion. I know benches as well, we've had a program that people can get a bench, uh, in honor of a loved one and have provided that, um, so many that in city parks, that's not even allowed in city park anymore because we ran out of space, and now they have gone to other places, and that has been a nice way to memorialize somebody, uh, that they love and come by and, and sit and reminisce, shall we say, in one way or another. Um, in regards to the general budget, I had asked staff, and I do appreciate, um, that on the contract services, the operational supplies, and the overtime, I'd asked and received thank you, um, from staff for each division and each department, what costs were for, uh, budgeted sixteen, seventeen, well, actual costs, uh, were as of year-to-date, and what is, uh, going forward and being asked. I, I was, was pleased to see in the contract services and the operational supplies that it seemed that it had held steady and that it even came under in many areas. I'm not gonna go department and division, 'cause it'll be here forever, but on the overtime aspect, that is one that I would like to hear from, uh, maybe the city manager, is how we're maintaining that. There were some departments that were quite over in the allocation for overtime, um, and there were some departments that were right on, on target, um, and I, I understand there's costs and there's unforeseen, it could be about backfilling positions in public safety, uh, but at the same time, I wanna hear some type of, what do we do? How do we analyze this and how do we go going forward, trying to make it more effective or efficient, so we can try to balance those funds and not have an over expenditure?
So, um, I've asked staff to prepare summaries, uh, both of the reason for the overtime, um, in terms of the historical expenditure in the prior year, as well as the, uh, look forward to how the budget was billed and, and why the overtime, what in, what is the purpose for the overtime, so that we can analyze that and present that in a comprehensive manner to the city council. We're not prepared to do that tonight, uh, but we can certainly bring that back to the city council for all divisions and departments with significant overtime budgets, and there are a few.
Thank you, I didn't expect a full answer, I was just looking for some general, but, um, as one member up here, I'd like to see that come back when we have a more detailed, uh, analysis of that and, and to make sure that we're addressing those on an annual basis.
Anything else on the general? Irene?
I apologize, I should've brought this up during one of our study sessions, but it occurred to me, we had talked about a financial director, a finance development person, uh, over the years, and we did not bring it up this year, and I, um, spoke to the city manager earlier about that, and she was going to make some comments.
So, we did not include a economic development coordinator, economic development manager in this budget as we have in private year, uh, uh, I'm sorry, in previous years. The thinking behind that was that, uh, we had programmed some funds in prior year, uh, last year for the downtown parking management plan, and in the current year for streetscape plan with the idea that continuing development activity and build-out of the transit corridor plan was consuming our, um, immediate available time and planning efforts, and with those two initiatives, that we were setting the stage and doing, um, uh, economic development in enhancement type of activities. We, we can certainly, uh, what I would suggest at this point is if that's in interest of the city council, is that we could bring back, um, the staffing proposal, um, at, at a subsequent meeting as early as the next meeting for more thoughtful consideration by the city council with costing and the, um, work activities.
Yes.
Anything else?
Well, I, are we looking at the sup- proposed supplemental enhancements?
Not right now.
Not right now, okay, as soon as we, that was it.
Okay, anything, Jim?
So, we're not gonna talk about the, the enhancements yet, but what are we doing as far as the, uh, the proposed major, proposed major program enhancements? I know there was, is that next month? Is that, that's not part of this, this approval tonight?
Uh, yes, staff is requesting additional time to incorporate the, the feedback and the, uh, discussion that the city council undertook at the study sessions to factor that in to bring you back some options and proposals to address those thoughts that were shared at the study sessions.
Then I have nothing.
Okay. Enhancements? Marty?
Thank you. Um, starting at the top, um, I'm concerned about having a full-time public information communication officer, uh, officer with an ongoing cost of hundred and fifty thousand. In fact, I'm, I think, I'm concerned of adding staff in general. I, I think we have to be very, very careful of where we are and what is absolutely necessarily critical as we, as we're going forward. There are pensions that we need to be concerned with, um, and I, I am worried about ramping up things so quickly and then coming down when the bubble eventually does pop of, of having to face, of having to lay people off. So, I'm, I'm not sure about, um, I'm actually not in favor currently of a full-time, um, communication officer. I would like to see, um, instead of buying vehicles, to lease vehicles, um, there are amazing lease rates right now. I brought that up last year, um, I haven't seen any data to show me why we should be buying vehicles instead of leasing them. Leasing is great because you, as soon as you drive a car off the lot, you lose five to ten thousand dollars, and, um, I, from what I recall from the vehicles that we currently have, they have very low miles on them, and so, um, there would be no problem of, of exceeding that ten thousand mile per year, um, catch that they have in, um, leasing vehicles. I'm concerned about the parks, hiring, hiring the two parks workers and, and understanding that's absolutely critical at some point, yes, when we get the, the new parks online, but that, those parks won't be online until, um, hopefully the end of the year, towards the end of the year, so, um, those are, those are my comments.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Irene?
Can we ask for clarification as we go through this?
I'm sorry?
Well, um, Councilman Marty Medina said he wasn't in favor of hiring full-time people, but then he only mentioned the communication officer and the park people, but is he also saying we shouldn't do the community service, two community service officers as well, or are you just, and the custodian? Or are you just saying of the people we're asking that is being asked to hire only those two people you don't want?
I'm okay with, the ones I didn't mention, I'm okay with. I mean, I was convinced from, um, the police chief why those two positions need to be full-time, handling the digital evidence, and, and I think we were, that's the future. We need to have those CSOs and they're need to be on full-time, so I'm all right with those.
So, your concern is just those two positions?
So, I'm sorry, the, uh, the public information officer?
And the parks.
The parks, um, and just hearing that, we really need a full-time custodian, if that's critical at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Any comments from staff regarding the necessity for...
Mr. Mayor, if, if we might, um, I was thinking that it might be more efficient to get all of the questions or, or need... to get all of the questions or need for feedback, if you don't mind. And then we can organize what staff needs to respond, if you're okay with that.
Sounds good. Rico, on enhancements?
I'd like to have more clarification on the custodian, what our current staffing is. As far as, you know, how many folks do we have on duty and for what facilities? I understand in the past, there used to be maybe two at this facility, for example. I'm sorry, in my day, there was 1.5. Here at the senior center, I know there's one. But how many do we have at the rec? How many do we have at the library? The police, does the gentleman from the city hall also service the library? So yes, I'd like to know that. Also, on the public information's communication officer, I'm not knowing if that is necessary, A, and/or if it's at a full-time capacity at this time. On the maintenance workers, since that was brought up, I know that, I'd be the first to say that the question was last time, a parks facilities manager, and my thought was we need people in the field to do the medians to keep the parks up and then we're going to be bringing others online. And I know that staff had indicated that was going to come back with those folks in the field to do the work that needs to be done. So I'd like, yes, I don't mind having it validated, but I do know in my day, we had two people that used to line the fields and now we have volunteers line their fields and we charge them for that privilege. I know that we used to have many other aspects of the parks, since I worked in Parks and Recreation. So I want to know that if we're bringing folks on, what is their end result of what they're going to do? Where are we going to see the value and how is the community going to notice a difference? As far as other items on there, if I'm not mistaken, the community services officers, somebody can address that, was, I don't know if was adding a lot of additional to address community needs, which will come up later, as the vice mayor said or when he was asking the question, but maybe that can be just reinforced to me. The digital evidence officer, I understood. I believe at this point, as far as the others, I was fine.
Okay, Irene?
Well, frankly, I have a question about, where'd it go? The replacement for council tables and chairs up here, $37,000? Was that? Oh, nice, very nice tables and chairs. That's the line item here and I'd like to find out what that actually means.
Is there anything else?
I have some questions about the public information communications officer. I think we need somebody to do certain things. I think maybe part of the hesitancy on some of our, to prove that kind of thing is we might need to have that fleshed out and the duties of what that person would actually be doing, like a job description maybe, and maybe that would help us understand what that person would be doing. And maybe that person could be doing some economic development efforts as well. So those are my two major questions.
Okay, Ken?
Right into that, public information officer. I think it's well-needed. However, I think we have some existing programs and resources that someone has to operate and that's our website, that's our social media sites. Those are the things that need to be maintained almost, at least on a daily basis, if not multi-daily basis, or else they're not dependable. So yes, we need to address that. I don't know if it's hiring one person that, you know, that does it or whether it's hiring a service or something. Yes, on the police, I don't have any issues as far as the police department enhancements, although I would like, from the study sessions and from these other enhancements that we'll be discussing next month, I'd like some reassurances that the CSOs, along with public works staff, are going to be doing the tasks that, assigned to the tasks that we have these new programs set up for. Building and planning, I look at those and yes, as much as they're, you know, enhancements and additional costs, I'm hoping that they're set up for cost recovery from those developments and from those big projects that are coming down the pike. Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing what our options are as far as, you know, vehicle purchasing and what's out there. And yeah, we do need new tables and chairs. But also, I mean, and to be serious, I am, you know, from these study sessions and from our public works department, stormwater. And what we've got coming out is whether we know we have the reserves for it or whether we know that we have some funding available. To me, you know, with a, with a city of this size and with the requirements we're faced with in the, you know, in the immediate future, $250,000 is nothing. So I think that's just a bigger discussion that is, that's just around a corner that we're going to see that number considerably increased.
I don't have any major objections. I do think with public information officer, what we've been going through the last year or year and a half with the enhanced information that people are requesting, I think it's a necessary move, especially with social media, the way it is now. You have to get the word out and you need somebody dedicated to do that. It can't be haphazard. On the building and planning, we have a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of stuff coming up. So anything we can enhance that particular division with, I'm in favor of. Let me see, tables and chairs, whatever. Just make sure you don't get your hands caught on staples or something. Just have to be careful. Yeah, it's a card table is what it is, right, dual-purpose. As far as the parks personnel, we have new parks coming up. I think we need to enhance that. It's very, very important that we get that done. And I think was explained in the process when we heard of the study sessions, why that's an important thing. So to staff, Connie, you can go down the list.
So I'm going to go backwards. Just a minute. So I'm going to start with stormwater and then we'll ask the community services director to address a few items. Regarding stormwater, I just want to point out that the $250,000 is a new initiative for spot repairs, similar to what we do in the water and the wastewater enterprises to deal with things that occur in real time and to have a ready funding source. The council is aware that over the past, well, certainly this past winter, we had three separate fairly serious, one very serious incidences of stormwater system failures that have required special repairs and for which there was no funding dedicated or available. $250,000 is only part of what we're spending on the various stormwater requirements. It's intended to help us pull a little bit ahead. But the council members, vice mayor, I'm sorry, is 100% correct that this is literally a drop in the bucket in terms of what the overall need is and how regulations are going to evolve the requirements for operation and maintenance of a stormwater collection system. So thank you for pointing that out. A couple of council members have mentioned vehicle purchasing and in particular. And in particular, the opportunity to look at a leasing program. We will undertake a more comprehensive review. We did do that a couple of years ago. And I'd like to refresh my memory about why staff's conclusion was and it could have been in that particular market environment. Turned out not to be something that we felt was important to recommend to the council. But clearly, given the cost of the fleet, the breadth and the need for the fleet that we operate, it is an important and timely consideration. I think what I'm going to do now is ask the community services director to talk with you a bit about the tables and chairs proposals. I agree, it is a multiple set of different location proposals, only one of which is for the deteriorating tables and chairs that you are using here tonight and that your colleagues on the planning commission and other city meetings use. That equipment experiences a fair amount of wear and tear with being set up and taken down and stored and whatever. But the director will address that and allow you to consider if that's something, a piece of that is something that you're interested in. So I would ask you to, why don't you come to the microphone?
Good evening again. So the tables and chairs, we actually have three different locations that we're recommending. The first would be the city council chambers. And it's not only the tables and chairs that you're using, but it's the 14 chairs that are used by staff at the tables behind as well as the five positions here along the staff table. Those chairs that are in fair repair would be deployed elsewhere. There are a number of staff chairs throughout the city that are of a lesser condition than these. So those that we could say we would certainly redeploy. The second area that we're talking about replacing chairs would be conference room 15 at city hall. Those are definitely experiencing some significant wear and tear. And in fact, the other day, there's a metal rod that supports the back of one of the chairs and that fell apart and came out. That's the second chair in room 115 that has failed. And so I think that that is an indication that as the next several months go on, we're probably going to experience some significant failures in the others as well as they're just general, less than presentable condition. The conference room, though, that is in the greatest need is conference room 101. We hold our development meetings in there. We bring the business community and the development community in. That conference table, you might recall the trim that goes around the particle board of the table. We've tried to glue that and re-glue that on several occasions. I and others have caught clothes on there. Those chairs are very old and we'd like that room, given the nature of the outside meetings that occur there, much like here, to present the city well. And so that is what the $37,000 that's in the supplemental one-time budget is for, is those three locations.
Carrie, if I might interject, just so people know, a lot of the equipment that she's talking about was purchased second-hand at the height of the recession when a lot of businesses in downtown San Francisco were just closing shops. So we were able to get a lot of that, a lot of that at the time that was purchased second-hand. So it wasn't, you know, that we used it all brand-new or anything. We made some pretty good deals at the time and it's, they're getting near their life, so.
Through the chair?
Irene?
Thank you for the explanation. And I'd like to suggest that we change the title then because it really sounds like it's just for us. So it may be just replacement of tables and chairs in conference rooms or something.
City facilities.
Facilities, yes.
In fact, if I may clarify, it's only five for you. And two more for the planning commission, but that's it for up there along with the seven tables.
Okay, thank you.
If it pleases the council, I'd be happy to talk about the custodial position next. The current staffing that we have to service, so we have 10 buildings in the city that are serviced on a regular basis, daily or on multiple times daily. City Hall, Recreation Center, Library, Police Department, Cable Television, Parks Corporation Yard, Public Services Corporation Yard, Senior Center, Portola Performing Arts Center and the Bel Air Clubhouse. And all of those, with the exception to the Portola Performing Arts Center and Bel Air, are serviced at least once daily. In a couple of instances, they are serviced twice daily, depending on public use of the facilities. So those 10 facilities, Monday through Friday and in some cases beyond, are serviced by four full-time staff and one part-time, four-hour-per-day staff member. Now, if I may also mention that those staff members are responsible for setting up the council meetings, planning commission meetings. They're responsible for setting up all board commission and committee meetings in room 115. And so I know that we typically think about, well, you empty some trash cans and you vacuum and you dust a little bit and that's kind of, and clean some bathrooms. But the list keeps going on and on if I articulate it. So what we are requesting is to essentially eliminate the halftime position and convert that after recruitment and the establishment of an eligibility list to a full-time position. That additional part-time capacity, so in other words, that additional half of a person would allow us to provide greater service here at the senior center, that's what's identified, and to do vacation backfill. I'll give you an example. We have a custodian out on vacation this week and we had a custodian call in sick yesterday. He's also out today, nothing serious. But when we have situations like that, our bench is so shallow that we then have to make very difficult choices about what facilities do and don't get serviced. And I will tell you, the front-end facilities that get serviced are the ones that the public uses. I think everyone would agree, those are probably the ones that have the highest priority. So it's a small increase to the bench, but it provides what we believe to be a significant improvement to how we can deploy the custodial staff and most importantly, how we can use what is probably first or second next to the Recreation Center, the most heavily-used facility in the city, which is the senior center.
Any questions for Carrie on the custodian?
And if it pleases the council, I'll talk about the parks maintenance positions. So there are actually two parks maintenance positions that we're requesting. One is a lead, a lead parks maintenance worker. And the other is a parks maintenance worker 1-2. They start as a 1. And then after they've demonstrated an aptitude, they're promoted within a flexibly-staffed classification to a parks maintenance 2. Those two positions would be the two positions that we would need to round out a third crew. In addition to that, and that third crew would be devoted to medians, which I'm embarrassed to say if the council has seen them recently, are always in need of care and attention. Medians, we would also use that staff capacity for the new parks. And I know that you see the parks requests in the budget and the council member is correct, those parks won't come online until the end of the year. It does take us some time to do the recruitments. We do have an eligibility list for one position. We do not have an eligibility list for the lead and so that will take a matter of months. And the council, of course, may also be aware that when parks come online, they're, they do so during a warranty period. And I think you probably also know, despite our best efforts to get the contractor to maintain those parks at a certain level, we have to service them daily. We have to service even those spaces that are under warranty because the warranty is just about issues with the irrigation system or the plant material. We still have to make sure that the trash is picked up and any other issues that might exist in the park are addressed on a daily basis. So we're trying to get a little bit ahead of the curve. So the medians would be an area of focus. The two new parks, I'd like to also add that during fiscal 1718, it's my understanding, based on the permitting process with Caltrans and the review of the plans, construction of the last median segment will also be completed between I-280 down San Bruno Avenue. One of the, two of the other things that I'd like just to mention to the council, we are experiencing something that we've not seen quite like we have in the last couple of years and that's plant material growing throughout the year. We did have a dormant or a colder winter season that would start the end of October or November and would run through February where daily attention to the parks could be deferred. As the weather has increased, so too has the plant material growth. And so we do need to provide more attention to the parks. The other thing that we're really looking forward to being able to do with these two additional positions is more preventative maintenance in the park, dealing with irrigation systems before they break in wastewater, painting restrooms before they start chipping paint and the like. So that's the general overview of what those two parks maintenance positions would offer.
Any questions for Carrie?
Through the chair. So in essence, back to the custodian, it's a 0.5 percent, 0.5 increase as far as from 4.5 current, asking for 5.
Correct.
Okay. I think also sometimes, you know, and I didn't think to go back in the history of staffing component, but you know, if I went back in of staffing component, but, you know, if I went back in time, you know, what did we have then, or how did we do it? And I'm just trying to think back when some of us who used to work at the Rec Center, how many did we actually have on staff at Parks and Rec? I think that's always interesting to go back and then see. If we had 4.5 10 years ago, or seven years ago, why did it work? Or if we had six, then maybe we can, you know, it's a very, more of a quick answer, I would think. The other thing is, so what I've heard from you on the parks maintenance is, yes, I understand it takes time for the recruitment process and to get folks up to speed, that they're going to focus on medians, and then they would be focusing on the two new parks. Is that, did I understand that correct, or are those, that's their three tasks?
So I'd like to clarify that those positions would not be tasked specifically with those assignments. The addition of those two positions will give us capacity to rearrange responsibilities among all of the nine parks maintenance worker positions that we currently have, and create three discrete teams that we don't currently have. So I don't want to give the council the misimpression that those two new positions will specifically work on those areas. Those will be the areas we will be able to address with those two additional positions.
Okay.
Marty, anything?
It goes back to when we, when we have the brand-new parks, parks online, then we will need the additional workers. And until then, you know, we don't need two, maybe we need one, but that's, I understand that they could do more when you're increasing your workforce by 20%, right, from nine to 11 workers, right? But I'm just, you know, we can't just continue adding staff, you know. They have pensions that we need to be concerned with, and I'll leave it at that.
Just so I understand, these won't be added tomorrow. It's going to take a while to actually get them onboard.
That's correct.
Right. Which means when those parks come online, we want people ready then. Right? Anyone? Anyone for Carrie? I think we're good.
Ask the Community Development Director to very briefly address the one-time supplemental items related to planning, building, and front counter staff. I'll just mention, before I let him talk, that these are one, these are positions that were identified as one-time in last year's budget, and that are currently in place, and that are necessary for an efficient and ongoing seamless delivery of service, and are budgeted and suggested on a one-time basis in order to allow us the flexibility of staffing up when we now, and as we previously have had, an increasing volume of activity, but then to seamlessly be able to ramp back down if and when that level of activity subsides.
David?
Mr. Mayor and council members, as the city manager indicated, these are not permanent positions. These are proposed to be contract positions, and they are reoccurring. The, the idea here is that as we have increased activity, as we do right now, we're ramping up to address the needs of our customers. To give you an idea of activity quickly, we've got a number of private development projects. We have a mixed-use project at 111 San Bruno Avenue that we're processing right now. It's 60 residential units above about 8,600 square feet of commercial space. We have a residential project, about 24 units, replacing the former Lee's Buffet at 271 El Camino Real. We're looking at a redevelopment plan for the overall Mills Park Center, about four and a half acres, with perhaps 330 residential units, and maybe 21,000 square feet of commercial space. We're also looking at preparing a specific plan for the Bay Hill area, about 89 acres an area, 400,000 square feet of new building space for U2. The budget motel site that has been long vacant is scheduled for demolition. We'll be working with the owners to come up with a plan for reuse of that property. We're looking at a master plan for considering how the shops at Tanforan could be repurposed and reused over the next 20 years. We also have public projects. We're updating our zoning code. We're preparing a climate action plan. And this past fiscal year, we've had 2,000 reports of zoning violations that we're following up on. So with that level of activity, what we're looking at is a planner, this is a continuing contract position, so as activity decreases, this position could be dropped. That would be a full-time position. We're also looking at a counter technician to serve at the counter, to provide information to customers at the counter, and also provide direct support to our code enforcement officers, so that they can spend more time in the field. I would assume that this counter technician would not only be at the counter, but be preparing administrative support work for our code enforcement officers. We also, the third position, have a plans examiner for only eight hours a week, and the idea of this plans examiner is to provide support in-house in our department, so that if we have a smaller plan review, that could be done perhaps even over the counter. And that person would also be involved with some of the larger plan checks off-site, but would be available onsite if there are questions by applicants, so that there could be a meeting onsite eight hours a week. So that's the extent of what we're requesting, and given the level of activity that we imagine, this, this certainly seems to be warranted. And like I said, we could make adjustments as the activity goes down. And moreover, we do enter into reimbursement agreements with developers of private development projects. So in terms of cost recovery, as was asked by council, we do have reimbursement agreements, and we are directly compensated for time spent on private development projects. And in addition, with this development activity, we would fully expect increased fees in addition to cover these costs. Be happy to respond to any of your questions. Thank you.
Ken?
My one question. You sure you're asking for enough?
Well, I will point out that-
I mean, that's, if one person's going to do that, then that's a super person, better hire them. But, I mean, you list, you had a long list of things that you want to get accomplished this year, and I'm assuming contract planning services, $120,000, is, you know, one year for one full-time person. So, good luck to that person. I'm, what I've stated again before is that it's great that we're getting action, that there's a lot of interest in the city of San Bruno with large projects, and even the smaller projects that do take time. You know, 60 units is still a significant project, but it is still a bedroom community. And as much as we're tasked with dealing with code enforcement issues and everything, there are people that are taking pride in their homes and improving their homes and want to stay here in San Bruno. And so they'd like, you know, the type of service that they've, you know, that we've always provided, as far as planning services, you know, at the Planning Commission, and then building department services. So I'm hoping with these enhancements, that those ongoing services for our own residents, you know, don't get affected.
As I indicated during our budget study session, we will monitor the need to deliver services to our residents and people working in our community. We do have the reimbursement agreements for private development projects, as I mentioned in our study sessions. And as there is a need to add staff, to help process these applications in a timely manner, we would look to the reimbursement agreements that we would enter into with the private developers to supplement as needed.
Anything else? Marty?
For reimbursement, is it like 50% reimbursed? Is that what we've seen in the past? And then that would reduce the net impact to the fund if it's, if it's getting reimbursed, right, throughout this table right here? If we, let's say you reimburse 25%, then that 25% would be reduced on the impact to the fund?
The way this works in terms of reimbursement, we have our staff, our contract staff and permanent staff on private development projects track the time that they're spending on those projects. And the time that they spend on those projects is then costed out at their full rate and charged against those projects. And then the developer needs to then pay the city back full billable rates, both our permanent staff and contract staff.
Our experience is, what percentage is that? Is it, we've had a contract planner here before, and is it at least 50, 60, 70%? And then my follow-up question to that is, that reimbursable amount reduces the impact to the overall fund, and it's not shown as a, as a new revenue, like where, on the other items where you, it shows some kind of recovery on that?
Right. The way that works is that if the person is working on a public project, for example, so if the person is working on the zoning code update, or, and I'm talking about a staff person at this point, or even a contract person that's working at the counter, for example, and not doing directly reimbursable work, we would not get reimbursement, say, for a contractor, say in the case of this particular planning position that I've listed here. I would estimate that that person would spend a fair amount of time, a large amount of that individual's time, really working at a lower level. And what I mean by that is a very important level, working with our citizens at the counter, providing information to citizens about zoning, general plans, et cetera, processing, building permit applications, so that our permanent staff, our longtime permanent staff can be working on, on larger projects to free them up. So it could be, for example, that the individual that is assigned to this work is maybe spending 50% of his or her time on reimbursable work from a private development project, and say 50% of that person's time at the counter and doing other public work that wouldn't be directly reimbursed by a private development project. Does that help?
No, that's exactly what I was looking for. But as I'm looking at page 43, we have the totals in the spreadsheet. So if we're, if we're anticipating a 50% reimbursement, then the impact to the fund is half of that, for budgeting purpose. I know it's budgeted, but that's budgets move. And you answered my question. I just wondered if maybe the finance director could, would we need to edit this spreadsheet for the impact of the fund?
So I was just consulting with the finance director about this, and it's my understanding that developer deposit account amounts, as the director was indicating, that are directly charged against both by full-time regular staff as well as by contract staff. Those amounts are typically not shown as offsets in the budget, because we don't, they're not predictable. And so those direct charges are directly covered through the deposit accounts, but, and, and would offset, but are not estimated at this time.
Okay. Anything else for David? Just David, when Ken said, I think really, seriously, is we have a lot of stuff coming up, and I think you should monitor it very, very closely. If you need more help, I think there's going to be ways to get it, because in the long run, four or five years down the road, this is all going to pay for itself with all of these projects and developments. It's very, very important that we be efficient in how we, how we attack all of this stuff coming, coming our way.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So I think I'm going to go to the Public Information Communications Officer, and then ask Chief Barberini to step up in just a moment and talk about the Community Service Officer, and that completes the list that I kept of the City Council's comments. Related to the Public Information Communications Officer, this item is proposed as a staff position in the city manager's office, for the purpose of assuring a truly robust public outreach to residents and the public generally, across all departments, all operations, and all types of media. And in particular, focused on who needs to know what, how do they need to receive that information, and what is the best way to connect with persons in all segments of our community and the public generally, as I indicated. Currently, public information outreach and education is done by each department. It's done with relatively, I would say, limited coordination among departments. And in many cases, it's done on project-specific topics, or with a, I'm going to say with a relatively narrow, we've got to get this message out because we have a meeting coming up, or because we have a project, or something. So it's a relatively narrow view, and kind of real-time focused, without, generally speaking, a broad-based, citywide view focus, and an opportunity to better inform the public, but also to better tell the city's story. And it's a good one. So as a result, while information is generally available, and, and certainly all required outreach and information is definitely made within the appropriate time frames and in the appropriate manner, all departments, and all departments, work hard to assure that that is the case, and that what is necessary and most important is disseminated. I would still say that information and outreach does not do as, as good of a job as I believe you and our public expect, to tell the city's story and to meet the very specific needs of our public. Staff believes that it's both necessary and desirable to, for the city to be able to do more, as I've indicated. And in particular, what we're finding is that the increasing and broad-based use of social media is one of the most important ways that people receive and expect to receive information from municipalities and from all sorts of other content providers. Social media is now used by the city, but only on a truly regular basis by two departments. Those are our Police Department and our Community Services Department, and as I indicated previously, with a relatively narrow focus associated with programs and activities under those particular umbrellas. We currently do not have staff capacity or the ability on a regular and reliable basis to create, coordinate, develop, post, and monitor social media content about the broad variety of city programs, activities, events, and initiatives. Again, that's done on a limited basis, and our outreach is done with a relatively narrow breadth of content. And I would just note, in closing, that other much smaller cities than ours have recognized the value of creating and disseminating the public messages in real time. And the public's use of social media to inform themselves about the city and about issues and activities of interest requires that the city be much more aggressive, much more active, and be driving the conversation as opposed to simply reacting and responding on a time-available basis, which is essentially what we're doing now. So that's my response to the several comments that we heard from the City Council about questioning the value or the need, or the timeliness of that particular initiative. Be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Connie at this time? Does that complete your list?
One more. I'd like Chief Barberini to just give a couple of comments about the Community Service Officer positions.
Good evening again. I just wanted to clarify what exactly is being sought when we're talking, when we're talking about community service officers, and differentiate between what the requests with the, these supplementals presented before you tonight, and how they differentiate from the requests in the larger scale or major supplemental. As you may recall, the major supplementals included two additional CSOs, is what we, how we refer to, community service officers that would be in the field, and to increase our capacity to be out there and proactively address issues such as parking in neighborhoods. While we're still excited and, and looking forward to having that, the ability to do that, these supplementals are a little bit different. There is one position that is currently assigned or currently funded now via the Glenview Crestmore Fund. And while that CSO's primary responsibility is to that neighborhood- More Fund, and while that CSO's primary responsibility is to that neighborhood and the needs in that neighborhood, we have also been experiencing some benefit when that, that individual's not needed up there. His work up there has been well-received, it's been very valuable, and we continue to receive positive feedback about the impact that that position has been in the neighborhood. However, when it's not needed up there, we've relied on that position to, to address issues such as parking, abandoned vehicles, and other neighborhood-type complaints. So that's the, the one position that we'd simply like to, actually, it would be retaining that position when that funding concludes at the end of the calendar year or mid-fiscal year. The other two positions without, at the risk of repeating myself from the second study session is, the first is a, a CSO that would be assigned to our property room. We have one CSO assigned there now. The council was, was kind enough to allot us a part-time position this, this fiscal year that worked 16 hours a week. It really kind of illustrated to us how large of a scale we're dealing with when we're, we're talking about our property room, we're talking about tens of thousands of pieces of, pieces of evidence that, that we're having a hard time managing, and basically, we're a little bit underwater in that area. Our calls for service and our activity has, has increased by about 25% over the last few years, and we're experiencing that from a support standpoint. Not everything the police department does is out in the field. There's some heavy lifting, both literally and figuratively, that goes on within the four walls of the police department, and this is one area where, where we're struggling a little bit. And, and having that part-time person, and, and while she's been great, she's been extremely valuable, it showed us that, you know, even with that additional help, where we continue to fall farther and farther behind. And then finally, I mentioned the digital evidence officer, which is the future. The way we manage evidence now is, is changing, and the way we're required to submit evidence, both the DA's office and, and requests from other entities is changing, and frankly, we would, we're, we're gonna need one individual with, with the expertise to be able to do that. That's going to, the need for that is going to be magnified. The next several weeks, you'll be getting a, you'll be receiving a proposal to implement a body warrant and car camera system, which will, is becoming the industry standard and a best practice, and in order to successfully do that, we're gonna need somebody to, to support that program. I think we've seen in the, in the past with, especially with the, the implementation of car, in-car cameras, that if we don't have the support and we don't have that, that resource behind it, that it'll fail, and we experienced that, and we don't want to experience that again. So I just wanted to clarify what exactly these community service officers would be doing and kind of differentiate between what the requests were, so there was no confusion, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the chief? Ken?
So, two now, two later?
Well, so, no, so, so what we're, so the digital evidence, the digital evidence officer, we're, we're, we'd be seeking a CSO position for that, which would be a third, frankly, in the, in the enhancements that you're looking at tonight, and then the, the major enhancements where we provided a joint program with public services and community development would be an additional two, should the council choose to, to entertain that.
Okay, so three now?
It's, I'm sorry, it's, it would be three now and-
It's three now and then two later.
Actually, for this, for this year, it would be two and a half. We have the funding for that one position through the, through the next half of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, what's the difference in the, in the salaries? Because one's at $87,000, one's at $53,000-
Yeah, the fifty-
And then one's at 110.
The, so the, so the way that, the way that we're forecasting this is the, the $53,000 position is the position that is currently funded through that external source, so we're looking at half the year, which for this fiscal year would, is, is how that's reflected there. For the, the property officer position is the $87,000, which would be a, a lower step or bottom step position, and the reason we, we went up to a higher step with the digital evidence officers is because we, frankly, we don't know how, how we're going to recruit for that. We want to keep it as a CSO classification. We think that's the most cost-effective approach to that. We just don't know as far as qualified applicants, what we're gonna have to do to attract those types of folks. It may have to be at a higher step, and we just wanted to, it may not be, but we just wanted to have that there in, you know, full disclosure kind of what we, what it may cost.
Thank you.
Anything else for the chief? Okay. Do all of those comments and answer everybody's questions to satisfaction? Marty?
I'm still, I think, having the communication officer full-time and not knowing surely what, everything they're doing, I think perhaps some contract work there to kind of see how it works out, to understand how-
That's the public information officer?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes.
Okay.
Public information, communication officer. To see how that actually works out, or maybe staff can bring back more definition of, of duties and, and by creating this new position. I, I do agree that having an interaction with the public is important, but I still think that I'm not convinced that we need a full-time person to do that. We have the police doing their part, we have parks doing their part, and I think they're doing a good job at that, so I'm, I'm not convinced on that one.
Okay. Rico?
So I do believe that the communication is key in anything we do in life, relationships, community, et cetera, and work. So I do believe we need to look at it. I don't know that I'm convinced at this moment to actually authorize this enhancement, but I did like Councilmember O'Connell's comment about maybe having this come back and vet it with more detail and a better discussion on it. I think what some of the comments that the city manager made helped to quantify that a lot for me, but I'd like the council member's suggestion.
Okay. Irene?
What was my question? What was my suggestion? I appreciate, actually, what you said, and I agree that we do need a public information communications officer. I would like to go ahead and approve the budget for it, but going forward, see how that actually, you know, kind of fill in what that person would be doing and how much we could get for that, but I, I'd like to have the money set aside to do that. We can always not do it later, but I'd like to keep that. I'd like to address the custodian. I think it's necessary. One of the things we keep forgetting to factor in is the, as the buildings age, with they, which they all are, it takes longer and more effort to keep them up and keep them clean, and the population has grown so much that the use is harder and harder on them, so as you all know from your own homes, as, as those things happen, it takes more effort to keep them up, so I would, I support doing the custodian, and while I realize that the parks, the new parks are not online yet, they will be hopefully shortly, and it does take time to hire people and get them going, I see a need for increased park maintenance right now. I know some of the people who are in this audience have actually gone out and helped clean up the parks, and I know Operation Clean Suite people, we've gone out and cleaned up the parks, so I don't see any problem with keeping two people, additional people busy until the other two parks are online. So I, I don't see any problems with any of these, except I'd like the, I'd like the tables and chair for the city council meetings title changed, and, and I would like to have the public information communication officer, I'd like more discussion about that actual role, but I'd like to keep the money promised for that, or put aside for that.
Ken?
I'm, 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 I'm okay with, you know, with the community, the public information officer expenditure, but agree that let's, let's get more information and, and get a real, real clear outlook as to what, what the duties are gonna be and how it's, how it's gonna start up. Everything else, I'm, I'm fine with.
I'm fine with pretty much everything with the public information officer. I know Marty mentioned, you know, maybe a contract-type person. I really think if you're gonna have someone that's going to, in some way, represent the city on social media, you really have to have somebody involved in a day-to-day basis, so I'm, I'm pushing for a full-time position, and the sooner we can get that person on board, the, the sooner we, we can get this rolling. I think it's very important, so.
I'm hearing from, I think, all five of us, in one way or the other, that we all think it's important, and we all think it's necessary, and I think Councilmember O'Connell has suggested that the monies be a somewhat position, and the monies be allocated in the 1718 budget, so it's available and it's there. However, with that, then it comes back to council with a better explanation, a detailed description of what it does, how it will service, and what difference it'll make for the community. Is that fair, Irene?
Yes. Which it would, which it would normally, anyway.
So, if based on that, that concept, then I'm, I'm willing to go ahead and support that, knowing that that will come back, and again, if we say part-time, if we say contract, if we say full-time, the monies are there, or they can be lessened, or they can be removed.
Okay. Through the chair? Marty?
I would like to suggest a compromise on the parks workers, that if we're gonna go out and hire their maintenance and park, maintenance park workers, correct, and that if we go ahead and hire them now, and the parks aren't ready, they can go out, help clean up our downtown, because it needs more help. The mayor hit it right on the spot. We, we got, how many pages spread in, in the Chronicle about how our downtown restaurants are, are doing, and that's gonna get people to come downtown. You know, there'll be people coming this weekend that kind of go, oh, wow, let's go and check out this place. There's a Cava Bar downtown, right? So I think we should, we should be very proactive now to, to show the shining face of our downtown and, and spend the resources there and continuing forward with that, so that it looks nicer when people show up, so I'll go ahead and support hiring the parks maintenance workers, but while we're waiting for the parks to be built, that they be allocated to help the downtown.
Through the chair. And, and correct me, but I think, and I think Councilmember O'Connell concurred that up until those parks are ready, as you mentioned with the beautification task force and people trying to clean San Mateo Avenue, that those resources could be deployed, but what I'd also would say, I'm gonna have faith in staff, because actions speak louder than words, and we're gonna see if, if it's cleaner, but I don't know that it's our place, I'm gonna speak for myself. I don't believe it's my place to have the, tell the city manager and the director where to allocate staff specifically. I think they operate the city, they deal with day-to-day, but obviously, until those parks are online, there are resources that are available, and they should be put to the use to make the most difference to this community. And San Mateo Avenue is not a bad place to start.
Okay.
Through the chair one last time, Jim.
Okay.
Thank you for allowing me to speak a little more. I know. I hear you, Rico, but right now, I believe we don't have anybody going up, down on the weekends to clean up the downtown, and we could definitely use it on the weekends, so hiring these people and knowing the, the environment that we're dealing with right now and the publicity we're getting, I think we should, we should be very aware of that and, and make sure we make a bigger effort now rather than waiting, so there you go.
Okay. So we've had a lot of discussion tonight. Would someone like to introduce a resolution?
I'll introduce the resolution to approve the proposed supplemental enhancements and the operating budgets and the everything, the capital improvement budgets.
Okay.
So that is, let me make sure I have it. Yeah, that's it.
One and two.
Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. Then we have a short discussion about the GAN.
I was just- I was gonna introduce.
I was gonna introduce.
I was just going to mention, Barrett, very briefly, that the, that the GAN limit, as the council well knows, is a result of voter propositions from the late '70s and the early '80s that sets an expenditure appropriation limit. That limit in 2016, 17 was $39 million. By two factors, a cost of living factor and a population adjustment, the updated limit for 1718 is $41,396,22, an increase of about $2,000, $2 million. The appropriations, the appropriation calculation that is subject to this limit is $28 million, meaning that the city is in fact $12 million, $12,600,000 under the limit, which essentially means that the city could spend $12 million more if we-
If we had it.
If we had it. With that, I'd answer any questions.
If there are no questions from council, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution for the GAN limit for 217, 218.
Councilmember Rico Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Vice, excuse me, Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ibarra?
Aye.
Mayor Ruane?
Aye. I just want to thank staff. We have reams of paper here, and there's lots of numbers on the paper, but they just didn't get put there. It was a lot of research by staff and a lot of, a lot of really hard work to, to make this, make this happen, so congratulations to staff for putting this budget together, and all the department heads, and everybody in the city that worked hard on it. I know finance really spent a lot of time, and, you know, we lost a, a person kind of in the middle of all of this stuff, and, and Mr. Lawyer stepped in to, to help and pick it up with Darlene and the whole gang, and I, I just want to congratulate staff for all of your hard work. It's, it's a big deal for, for a city to approve a budget like this, and congratulations. So we're gonna take a two-minute break.